An open meeting, the meeting is being recorded. Vice Legions?
Vice Legions, good to have you here, United States of America and truly a republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approved over minutes of the monthly meeting on July 15, 2021. Any questions on July 15th view of the motion?
I think motion approval.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion approved, minutes from July 15, 2021. Okay, we're going to open up to business comments. Jim?
Ongoing situation with Jerry and Blueberry. I don't know if you guys examined that after our major rainstorm, but all the powder chips that were put on there have been washed out of Jerry. And it's also running down my side, there's a big pile of chips down in Irene's, which is your yard. So it's, I want you all to also see that little drain that you cut in a little bit.
Filled back up.
It's filled back up with chips, so.
Actually, the road down there today.
I see what you're asking.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, the road gets, did the chips come out on the road?
So.
But you're.
There's still a drainage problem.
The water is any coming into your yard?
I didn't know where the road did and flush the rain to fill my yard up with water.
But you're not having no chips in your yard, are you?
Uh, yeah.
No, I didn't know it was too much today compared to last time.
I just showed them.
Oh, okay. Like I said, I did.
I took that pile down by Irene's down the place already, so it's still built drainage.
No, it'll go back up and then clean it out again. Ronnie?
Yeah. Ron, I'm the president of the fire company here, Jay Township. I have a question here, I wanted to ask supervisors concerning the American Rescue Plan monies. I know all municipalities rewarded money. And I do know that there's a lot of great areas in this area, I don't know how the money can, you know, be allocated and what have you. So, but what I do understand, correct me if I'm wrong, is that some monies could be used by the township to help emergency organizations with financial losses during the COVID pandemic. And that's my understanding of it, you know, I attended meetings with the county commissioners too. Again, we're working with them too, but like I said, you guys know too, there's still great areas in this, how the money can go, they just can't give it out. You know, due to that, you know, in 2020, we usually have two good fundraisers at a fire company. We have a spring cash back, which brings in pretty good money, but then we have our big gun bash in November, which is our biggest fundraiser of the year. And in 2020, of course, we were unable to hold them fundraisers. What I'm here to do is just, you know, ask the supervisors if they would consider possibly helping out with the lost revenue that we did lose due to not being able to have fundraising last year. So, no, we haven't figured.
I, yeah, I mean, Ron, if that is actually something that we're allowed to spend it on, we'll definitely talk with you about it. Do you know, I know the one thing we can do with it so far is any money that we lost in 2020 compared to 2019, is how they determine how much money. They don't care why the numbers are different, but we take in our total income of 2019, our total income of 2020, whatever the difference is, we can just put that into the general fund. Okay, because that's, they assume we lost due to pandemic. Um, so I'm sure you have numbers on what you're, what you need looking at there, you know, from year to year.
If you want us to present something for you, we can write something up to show you.
Well, yeah, I mean, first and foremost, I know we're, um, we're still trying to figure out what we're allowed to do with it, and we've had a lot of discussions back and forth with P Sats and Pendot. We are supposed to have our county convention next month at the Royal. There's going to be some people coming in from D C E D to explain that to all the townships and municipalities we even define as the city and the boroughs, because everyone, nobody knows what we can do with it, for sure.
And when I attended the county commissioners meeting, they said about, you know, they have lots of money they got, you know, so if they don't know, we're still waiting for information on that, what we can get. They just can't tell, they don't give everybody what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah.
They can't handle a lot of straight lines, but they can't do that.
Right.
But I mean, we're just looking to have you consider that, you know, to help us with a lot. Because, you know, a fundraising with us, when we lose that much money, you know, it's hard to recruit, you know, to do it again, you know, again, this year we're not having a big fundraiser, gap cash bash, of course, because you can't get guns, basically, so we're running a smaller thing, you know, so.
But. So you're not having this year, you just have your spring one right here.
Maybe into that one.
You're not going to have the gun bash again?
We're having a gun drawing this year, because we totally get 10 guns, you know, it's hard to get 50.
Right, right.
They just can't get them. But maybe next year when all this is done, hopefully it doesn't get any worse or we're backwards. But, but, you know, I just like it to consider that. And if, if you need something from us, or if you want us to send something, we work some numbers up and send them up to you and show you what we lost. You know, and again, I understand fundraising, and you all know, it depends on the crowd or either side, everything can be higher, it can be lower, you don't know, because you don't know what the crowd will do.
Right.
Actually, last Monday, I attended a seminar, Senator Chris Dush had it St. Mary's, that was a couple hours. And this, the American Rescue Plan was a big topic, there's probably 30 different people there asking a lot of questions. And I mean, that was a big issue there. And one of the big things he mentioned, I took a note, the guy, you actually say if we do decide to give the fire company X amount of dollars, you have to go through the U.S. Treasury, and they can actually answer yes or no. But back in June, the P Sats magazine, I don't know if you guys read it, by Kevin, one of those questions, our volunteer fire company wasn't able to do many fundraisers last year. Would we be able to allocate funds to the fire company because they are nonprofit, or organized as a nonprofit? And the answer was yes, permit, U.S. laws, American relief, and as of where you go on the Treasury's website. So money can be used.
But it has to be approved through the U.S. Treasury.
Yeah.
Well, there is, just like Ronnie said, him and John went to the commissioners, and they didn't really know how they can appropriate.
There's a lot of red out before there, but it's a lot of things that need to happen, they go, how, you know, things keep changing, you know, and how to allocate it.
Right, I think we ought to definitely look out, and if we can do it, and that's how we should help them out.
We'll get you some things.
Some numbers and.
Yep.
We'll do some homework on it and find out what you would need to, I'm sure you're going to need to supply that. It'll probably be your comparison of 19 to 20, because I know that's what it is for the time.
I think it'll be about a five-year comparison, but, you know, but just, you know.
And like I said, P Sats are all on board with that, too, so I think we're good there, so. Right, anything?
Well, I'd like to thank you guys for considering it and your time, okay?
Yep.
And I'll believe, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Thanks again, guys.
No, I'm good.
Good.
Hey, Joe. Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Are these guys still on board with selling out of our store and water companies?
Selling out?
Pretty much so.
I don't really think we're selling out.
Whatever you want to call it. Uh, what's the name of that company again that you were?
Infomart.
Who?
Infomart.
You're still on board with doing that?
We had a tour the other day.
Even though the board members are in disagreement with these guys? Most of them?
I can't know, they just come in, they want to look at it, they might know even be feasible.
Right.
Until we see any kind of numbers.
Yeah, we haven't even got.
We still have a lot of footsteps to go down the trail there, you have to, by the sounds of it.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
As I correct you, it's not selling anything. It's, they're, they're an operations company. They hire on our employees, teach them the proper way to run the place, so that we don't continue to leave, end up in consent orders.
There are others too, though.
And, and then they provide support to those employees.
It's not selling.
So it's just to manage the employees that are operating, so we have safe water and, and a good product going back to the stream out of the sewer plant. We still retain all the ownership, set the rates, hand up billing. Set the rates, not accept the rate.
Accept the rate.
The authority would still set the rate. Do you understand that?
I do.
Okay, good.
They'll set the rate. At first it sounded like they're going to set, set the rate.
The board does that.
Anyhow, there's another question too. This bridge down in Cali, do you know what these beams for? How big were them beams anyhow?
How big?
Yeah.
14.
Were they H beams or I beams?
C channel. C channel.
Oh, they're C channel. I seen the paperwork on it, they were $1,000 a piece for these 12-foot C channels.
And they had to meet a certain curriculum too, for all that. Because actually, they sent the wrong ones the first time, and.
Yeah, did they have like stainless steel mixed in, or their alloyed product?
They met the engineer specs.
They will run.
They met the engineer specs, as long as we're doing everything through the engineering.
Another thing on that bridge, somebody was drilling holes in it, do you know that?
Yes.
Now, the one hole, yeah, the one hole that they drilled, uh, whatever they salt the, the bridge to keep the ice off of it, uh, the one drain hole is going to dump directly on the center pier and salt, water and cement don't really get along with one or another. So you might want to look at that.
The holes are going to be sleeved with drain pipes.
Yeah.
And they'll be angled away from that center pier. But, you know, that's, that was the plan after having, the only option we had was to drill. It was all engineered and designed.
Is there a load spot in that area that you had to drill there? On the deck?
No, it was how we access. Steel up to where it needed to be, they were 600 pounds a piece. We had to lift them up into place with a crane, so that's.
That was access to bring the cable down through the winch to pull them up in place off the.
The hot key struck.
Yeah.
Now, were they bolted in, or welded in, or what?
Bolted.
Bolted?
Yep.
Did you put any, uh, anti-corrosion stuff between this hill beam that you installed and the other beam that goes up against? Because, you know, they put steel together and you have salt water on them.
Like I said, Joe, the engineers told us what we had to do to make it right, and we followed the. We're not going to talk about this all night. It's taken care of, it's going to be inspected in October, right?
Why are you going to pull the cones off the bridge and get it back up?
When they tell us we can only try.
Joe, that's not our.
It has to be inspected again.
By.
By an engineer.
Counter engineer. Separate engineering.
That's the outfit that works for Pendot. And they'll tell us, we can open up, we can put the sign, raise the weight back up. So that's scheduled for October.
And that's good to hear, you're going to sleeve the drill hole so that the water's converted away from that center pier.
It'll be taken care of. Anything else?
Not right below, but I'll think of something like.
I'm sure you will. Okay. Frank?
Yeah, I wasn't here the last meeting, but on the June meeting, I seen that Mr. Crewy, you got $89 for reimbursement for prescription.
Yeah, because actually, I paid it, I got the bill, and it was never paid through the township. So I paid for like, what, six months, five months? Yeah, it was 17 something a month.
Is that the alter for 396, the next page?
That's his supplement for my insurance, the hundred and some. It's paid every quarter, 300 and some.
He paid it through here?
Yeah.
Medicare should take that out.
This is the supplement.
And the township code was changed a few years back to allow anybody that's on Medicare to have their supplement paid for through the township rather than the group medical plan, because it saves about $1,500 a month per person to do that.
So I can get mine paid through when I come retired, right?
If you're a supervisor.
No, I mean, what's the difference?
The township code is the difference, frankly, that's the way it works.
And I just think it's getting me about $70,000 a year back up there for misinsurance.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's climbing and climbing.
It's going higher.
I think for the budget this year, you're really going to have to look at that again. We had that down pretty good, now it's just getting out of control again.
It's going to go up again, I mean, there's nothing, we've been talking with the insurance company, there's nothing we can do about it. It's the byproduct of Obamacare eliminating the high-dollar plans. They're forcing everybody's, now that they got rid of all the good pay, or the good plans, they're forcing the price up on everything.
Yeah, I said it, Dave, you have no choice. I mean.
Just let me comment, Frank. $17.80 a month is my drug plan. And it comes out to be $213.60 a year. My health insurance for my supplement is 132.15 per month, 396.44 per quarter. Total year, $1,585. So actually, my total for my insurance for a year is 1799.36. My first 54 months as supervisor, I never took insurance. If you want to do the math from back in 16, I probably saved the township over $85,000. When I went on Medicare, I was right to take it.
When I see you got reversed for $89 to glasses.
Glasses.
Prescription.
No, prescription, yeah, because I paid it, because I kept getting this thing that they're going to cut it off. And actually, it's.
That was my fault because I didn't.
So, and actually, I got a copy of that too, so.
I just didn't understand why you were under a different name than UPMC.
Well, that's.
Didn't understand.
Randy, yeah.
Because the rest are under UPMC, then I seen your name.
This is the supplement that Nicholas says Randy has to make.
And put it into comparison, if you're over the age of 65, on our health plan, it would be $2,000 a month per person. So if he chose not to take the $300 supplement option and put he and his wife on the insurance, $4,000 a month rather than $300 a month.
Okay, I can just ask.
It's all, it's all township code, it's all been there for years.
He said, I didn't take it until I turned 65 and had the option to take it, and I requested it.
We've actually talked with the insurance guy about, and it's the same thing if one of our employees were to go to the age of 65, um, they can take the same, take advantage of the same program, save the township that $2,000 a month. We're debating whether we're going to have to actually revise the insurance guidelines to make sure all that kind of thing happens. We don't have anybody approaching that age right now, but, I mean, we did a few years back, have somebody over the age of 65, and it was costing a small fortune, you know? It's all ways to keep it down, unfortunately, the only thing that they look at now with Obamacare is age. So the older you get, the more the insurance costs. The only way to lower that annual figure is to get younger people, you know?
Or, or change your plan, instead of.
We have lowered our plan multiple times. The price is going up.
It used to be platinum, now you're down to gold, now you're down to silver, you're going to have to go to copper. Well, I know.
There you go.
It keeps going down.
Right.
Okay, one more thing, I'll be quiet. A few months ago, I sent her a right to no Medicare, and I was denied it, said it was under investigation or whatever. Now, when you're a municipality, I'm finding out, it has to be voted on, word to board. So this, you have to vote on it.
Vote on what?
Just because your lawyer says you can't have a copy of it, you still have to, it's up to the board to vote on it.
What does this pertain to?
When I asked for the lawyer.
Is this for the water sewer?
This was a couple of months ago. But now I'm finding out that the actually municipalities, or even like the water board, I'm finding out, I've been checking on this, you just can't say it's, how do you say that?
Client.
Client things.
Client for.
It has to be, yeah, it has to be voted on, or doubt the board.
Well, I think what he's, what he's trying to say, Rick, is that you have client lawyer privilege, and the board has to vote to, to give people transparency, has to vote to.
Not give, not, not.
To rescind the lawyer-client privilege. That's what the water authority needs to do, that's what it came up in, the water authority.
I'm just saying, that's, that's what you do, you just can't say, you have to vote.
We, we have attorney-client privilege anytime we're talking with our attorney. If we choose to vote to change that, to pass something on to the public, we can do that, but.
That's up to the board.
In the case of where, what you're asking for is an active case that we're possibly pending going to court on, I'm not going to share with you what we're working with the attorney. Because that would then become public to everybody, and they, then the person that you're taking to court can use that against us before we ever get to court.
And that's fine, but it has to be voted on, I'm finding out.
It does.
By the board. Attorney Brian, currently, you always use this now.
The supervisors only have the right to appoint board members purely.
Well, we know that.
Oh, to turn it over to.
Right. They're overstepping right now.
I don't know. Is that, Frank, correct me, just say, okay, you did request for.
The right to no act, yes.
Okay. And you're saying we didn't turn it over, but we can, we can vote to say we agree to turn it over?
Yeah, or not the bridge.
So it has to, so basically, you turned that application in, and it's one of those things, they have to see.
Well, that's what I'm finding out, that's what I'm finding out, it's just not the attorneys, because you're working with an attorney.
All it takes is just for you guys to accept or deny.
Have to accept it or not accept it.
It's not a matter of record, though, if it's under litigation like this.
Well, it's different with time. But I mean, you know, we're one.
I mean, we have the P Sats, and I, I'm not sure we're getting good information there, Frank, so we'll have to follow up with the attorney, I have to. But either way, um, I can speak for myself only here, but we're not putting anything out that's pending litigation. You know, that's just, it's just bad business to put something out there before it's been hashed out by the court.
We understand that, he's just saying we have to vote on it.
And I don't know if that's the case, we, I think you always have attorney-planting privilege, so you could vote to, to release it.
That's what I'm finding out.
Or waive it, but I don't think, I mean, that just exists. So he's asking for, you're asking for us to waive it?
No, I'm saying from now on, I think that's the way that I read it, it's supposed to be done.
Okay.
Well, we'll, we'll just.
We're about pending litigation.
Anything else, Frank?
No.
Good.
That's all.
End it.
Uh, this is pretty basic and quick. Okay. This is a letter from Stacy. On February 8, 2021, the Jay Township Water Authority sent my wife a letter indicating that they wanted to change the water meter at our house in my wife's office in Weedville. They indicated that the meter at my house in Burndale was being changed because of grant funding that they received. They gave no reason for changing the meter at my wife's office. They demanded that I schedule an appointment so that they could change both meters at the same time without regard to the fact that both my wife and I work. They threatened to place us in violation of their rules and regs and contact their solicitor if we did not comply with their request. They highlighted some of their rules and regulations, but none of them applied to the situation. So my wife contacted the Elk County Planning Department to inquire about the grant funding to replace meters in Burndale. She discovered that Patrick Wachovich, plant operator foreman, and Sharon Brem, secretary treasurer, were not telling the truth. Funding for Burndale meters had not yet been received, and no meters had been ordered. After the planning department made a phone call to the water authority, my wife got another letter from the Jay Township Water Authority dated February 17, 2021. The letter was signed by Sharon Brem, secretary treasurer. It read as follows. Quote, "Your meter replacement on Madison Street is on hold until the grant meters are received. To keep contact in a minimum, the authority will still like to replace the meter at your home and business on the same day. The Jay Township Water Authority will contact you when they are ready to install both meters." End of quote. From the meeting videos that I have watched after we received the February 17, 2021 letter, it was said that the meter at my wife's office was not working. However, we have shown proof that the prior usage history only showed 1,000 or 2,000 gallons per year since 2015, and there is also video of the, of the meter working when a faucet is opened and the register is showing an increase in usage that you would expect to see with respect to past usage history. The water authority's final reading should also verify that the meter is working. Watching the videos also reveals the anger shown towards me, especially after I started making problems known about the, how the water system was being operated. I think the real reason for all of their concern about my water meters is revenge. Unfortunately, our community had to wait until July 29, 2021 to learn that I was correct about the way Patrick Wachovich was operating the water system. The water authority covered up their problems well, and now we all will be paying for the problems that I was trying to prevent three years ago. The only letters that we received from the water authority after the February 17, 2021 letter were two shut-off notices that were taken to the door at my wife's office. The first shut-off notice was on July 28, 2021, and the second was on August 6, 2021. From information that I have seen at their recent meetings, it appears that their new Burndale meters are currently on a 22-week delay. So as of the date of their shut-off notices, no meters have been installed in Burndale. Their February 17, 2021 letter is further proof that you cannot trust the Jay Township Water Authority. I have attached copies of the shut-off notices. Their shut-off notices did not have a reason why my wife's water service was being shut off. The delivery requirements for the shut-off notices did not comply with their own rules and regulations. We were not given an opportunity for due process so that we could defend against the water shut-off. And as of this date, there was no follow-up letter to explain how we could have water service restored. Also, in the water authority's rules and regulations, the owner of the premises is directed to install their meter and have it inspected by the water authority upon completion. We were not presented with that opportunity. The water authority demanded entry under false pretenses. Now that they have shut off water service to my wife's office, apparently to satisfy their revenge, we are not paying the water bill for the office. The usage charges would have normally ranged from $466 to $932 per year, but the readiness-to-serv charge would be $276 per year. The readiness-to-serv charges would have been paid regardless of usage. So their revenge is now costing them $276 plus $466 to $932 for usage per year. Their revenge has clearly shown they act irresponsibly and use their power against their own customers instead of for their customers' benefit. I believe that the consent order that the customers just learned about will also demonstrate that they had no regard for the health and welfare of their customers. As supervisors, you should not allow the businesses in Jay Township to be subject to this type of treatment. You need to immediately make changes to prevent this behavior by our water authority from ever happening again, especially if this community is going to move forward into the future. To continue running a water system as it has been for the last decade will only make the problems worse. The problems have already been repeated, you need to consider changes. If you have any questions, please contact me sincerely, Stacy Snyder. And the shut-off notices were put on the door when Denise was not in the, her law office, and the neighbor was not home. So figure that one out, two notices were not, and nobody was around, and were attached.
I'd like to comment on that. First, the letter is done all thoroughly correct. Secondly, I put a second notice on the door, we knocked on the door, she was there. So, take it for what it is.
I have a question. Was she delinquent in her bill at any point? Did she not?
I could tell, I could tell you, uh, we had a list of 30 meters that was not working.
Was she delinquent in her bill?
Low reads. Low reads on the meters, and it's the standard process that we do, going around and checking the meters.
It wasn't any different than what you were, than what had happened previous years before. The only thing different was the COVID and the fact that she wasn't using the office as much and was doing things a lot of times from home. And I think anybody's business, I think Jeremy's business, when he was having to have people pick up the things at the window, I bet you his water bill went down.
Our usage was about half.
Thank you. Man, this.
Not just, just been once, you know? We have people in there using the restrooms.
People were not using her. And, I mean, how many times does she use a bathroom?
All right, you read the letter, he's not here to go back and forth, but that's just.
May I ask you a question? When you generally check meters, like this particular incident, do you check so many dwellings in a row? Is it easier for you, and do you just, you know, check in a straight line while you're in the neighborhood?
That's why the company, but they, when they read the meters.
They read them.
Well, yeah, when you read them.
So that's, they check every, that's how they.
Right, right, but if there's a situation where you're checking for whatever this one was checked, would you normally check several in a row?
They just check them all.
This gentleman is responding. This gentleman is responding, that's why I'm kind of asking.
Well, uh, when we check meters, uh, it takes us about, uh, well, now with the new auto reads, it won't take as long, usually two and a half days. So we will check, sometimes we'll check one side of the road and we won't get to the other side of the road until the next day.
You're saying.
Right, right, but I'm saying, would you, would you normally check several consecutive dwellings or businesses in a row?
I think they check them when the numbers are off.
Yeah, but I mean.
But I'm right there, I don't think.
What I'm saying.
Since the, since this letter indicates that he had consecutive bills.
You can get a water meter to wear that and I'm not perfect on this, but I've seen water meters that were taken out and that little diamond thing's turning. But the, the internal guts has froze up and it goes bad. So water will still flow through that meter and will not register.
It must register.
I'm, I'm just saying.
It's an ongoing.
Several months in a row to have a zero read is something wrong. But if you have a zero read for three months in a row, it's something that we need to look at. And all it takes is an access of letting.
Wait, we're not, they're saying the water meeting. It's not a water, but okay. You had like thirty meters weren't reading.
The acquisition of.
Okay, but I mean, are you picking on one individual or are you?
No, we went through the whole thing, they were the last one to get to it because we.
Well, like I said, this, I know it's an issue we're gonna listen to, but a lot of this should be done in a water meeting.
I, I, yeah. It's all sort of.
So are you saying that everybody that was on that problem list should be notified? Is that what you're saying?
Everybody, well, I could tell you.
Everybody on the track right across the road from, uh, Mr. Coons last stand,
he had bad reading.
Yeah, but no, that's somebody else, is everybody on that problem list, did you say they've been notified? Cause I know that's.
Knock, why not, you're not the door.
Well, they, they, it has to be a certain.
Okay, okay, we're done with the water meeting. Okay, we're, Linda, anything else?
No, it's, uh, we're gonna have to speak. They, they need to follow their rules and send a certified letter through the mail and do it the right way and give due process.
Dana.
Oh, I'm done.
You're done. Julie?
Uh, no.
Jim?
I'm just gonna, get a couple of quick comments. Following up on what Kevin was saying about the right to know, okay, is there's certain portions of the right to know, like the, uh, the availability of M F D Ss and things that aren't located, that should be available to anyone who asks to see them, who's exposed to anything in the building as far as your garage building or anything else goes. Those things should be really available, uh, without, without any, any sort of litigation at all, I mean, as far as that goes, you know, I mean, it's just, uh, that's part of, that's part of the program. And all that has to do with the right to know. But, uh, the, uh, the other comment that I would like to make, okay, is, is that, there seems to be a whole lot of, of BS, you know? It doesn't pretend anything as far as township itself goes that comes up at these meetings and, uh, I just think that if you guys have expedited meetings, okay, by doing exactly what you just did, kind of short. Doesn't have to be, you know, a, a kind of dissertation, a medical thing that comes along.
Nancy, are you up to?
Yeah, I'll wait till my other.
Just wanted to know if you guys are gonna vote tonight, I'm putting somebody on our board we need.
That's, that's on the agenda.
I know. Alright, I wasn't at the last meeting.
Yeah, it's listed, uh, vacancies. Copy?
Just sitting in here, about the ATV, that's all.
Okay, that, that's coming up too. Uh, next to you, you're, I know you're. Ellie, Billy Dick? Your, your wife?
Or girl.
We're L I S.
Oh, okay, as far as gonna go. Bill, you have anything, Bill?
Huh?
Do you have anything?
Yeah, I wanna find out about Calabana Pipe, you give it to the state now?
Well, that's on the agenda too.
You're gonna give it to the.
Well, it's.
The oldest road, one of the oldest roads in Elk County and probably the state of.
When we get, it's on here. Where you always.
Clearfield County before it was Elk.
It was.
That's correct.
Okay, that's under old business.
Still some through Elk County, didn't it?
Nowadays it does.
Yeah.
Okay, it's, it's coming up under old business, it's listed, so, okay. We got the visitors calling in stem, let's go to approve all the bills. Is there any questions on the monthly bills? Do you have a motion? Do you have a second, second? All those in favor? Aye, aye. Motion to carry payment bills a total amount of forty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty cents.
Right.
Yes.
I didn't see this till this time, I mean, you, the bill was like, uh, Russ Brown, I see it's a thousand eighty-five dollars, I mean, we have some new systems put in there.
Yeah, there was how many?
I don't know, there's a hot ball.
There's three or four, I remember seeing.
Okay, that's, that's all.
It wasn't one, it was like, I think maybe five. Yeah, it wasn't just one, it was four.
I didn't know what the numbers were anymore, that's another reason.
Okay, yeah.
You know, I mean, it used to be, when I was there, about a hundred fifty bucks.
Yeah, anymore, it's. Okay, but there, uh, treasures report.
The general fund balance as of July fifteenth was a hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars plus five cents. Balance as of August nineteenth was two hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and five cents. State fund, uh, balance as of July fifteenth was two hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety-two cents. Balance as of August ninth was a hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and two dollars, thirty-five cents. Pliget balance as of August nineteenth was thirteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one. Capital Reserve balance as of August nineteenth was a hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-one. State fund C D balance as of August fourteen was forty thousand, seven hundred and eight. General Fund C D balance as of August nineteenth was eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four and total deposit was a hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and ten cents.
Is there, is there a better place to put that hundred thousand if you lost from the rescue? Money wise, under.
Uh, we're trying to figure out where we're allowed to put that too, is, I mean, the rest of right now is just supposed to go into general, but we're thinking about possibly moving it to like the pliget or the capital reserve to keep it separate for um, reporting purposes, cause there's gonna be a whole lot of paperwork to go with any of that.
Yeah, well, I know there is, I know there is, I just didn't know.
So we had discussed it, but again, they haven't given us the.
Yeah, that's why it's just there for now.
Okay, no, I was just.
They actually set their own code, three fifty-two.
Oh, I don't know.
Okay, correspondence.
J Township Water Authority meeting minutes, county commissioners meeting minutes, then have Facebook, Facebook posts. Again, seriously, assignments, consent order, we need to compare to your who looks responsible and copying a letter of the Water Authority Board.
Okay, we're going to road maintenance and equipment maintenance report.
Can I make a comment on that? I hope the guy who driving that John Deere the other day paid it back to the farm without burning it, uh, I don't know. And he lost all the fluid coming down the road.
Was John Deere a mower?
That was the mower, yeah.
Yeah. Is that, was that a separate, there's a one, from the I don't know.
Yeah.
And he lost it all.
What, where was he come down from?
Come down to Weed Street, he blew the line up there by Lexel's, okay? Big puddle all over the road there, then there's a dual street and my wife was there, we told him we walked on it from the office to the fire company, okay? And we were walking down the road, she said it's truly wide, it's hitting there or it's hitting there, but by the time we got down to the fire company, it was almost gone, so.
What, what day was this?
What, no, I have a Wednesday, Tuesday?
Yeah, this week.
We have, oh, okay, cause I mean, I was.
I mean, I didn't even know, the guy said they blew a hose, that's what I was.
Yep, they, they blew a hose, alright, but I just wondered if that was on, on the pump side and not in the garden pump, I'm still dying.
No, he was out using it today, so it must.
So it must've, yeah, cause I was down here today.
No, I didn't even know it happened, I knew that he was out running it today.
Any questions on the maintenance or roads? Okay, we're going into old business, uh, flood issues courtesy run. Oh, very.
Nothing, nothing really new there, except did you ever try knocking on Rush Gray's door again, see if he's gonna sign that paperwork?
And actually, I know he worked second shift and I go by and I'm looking to catch one outside, I'll actually see.
Yeah, I mean, there's no rush because we're not gonna get any of that till next year, but Eli had asked if he signed it or not, cause it, as far as their planning goes, they need to know whether he's gonna sign one or not, so.
I mean, I said, I know he works second, the day we, I go, I'm out there, but I'll.
Yeah, see if you can catch up here and get it.
And even get in contact.
Find out, if he's not gonna sign it, we just have to move project further down and we have to get Leonard to sign.
Cause last he said, what, the attorney he's gonna look at?
Uh, he said, when he came to pick it up, he said he's gonna have his attorney look at it and then he never.
Okay, that's true, get in it then. Okay, uh, anything else floods, issues, like I said, until next year. Okay, combining the water and sewage boards. Well, we just had them guys tour the other day.
I, I mean, that, that's.
That's.
There's nothing new on that front, is there?
They toured both places, right?
Yes, yes.
Infomart, like Joe was asking about, came in and looked at both places and they still have to, they're gonna, they actually said.
There's still a lot of footsteps to go that.
Oh, yeah, they just, they were asking for more information, so, um, to, to put a price on that, but, uh.
They're gonna look at the numbers and stuff, you know. And they're already aware there's consent order.
Yeah, that's.
Do they have a, a guy? Or they just, feel their way around?
I'm sorry, they are operators down there. Oh, I'm scared, that's what you're asking, yeah, the, uh, Dennis Beck was there as well, he just at the Water Authority and then the two employees were at the water authority. They, they all knew we were coming, it was all set up.
And we have a new operator coming next Wednesday. So new guy's coming as.
Like, yeah, I mean, it was all.
Yeah, it wasn't like they went nosing themselves, they had people from both authorities.
Yeah, I asked, is there, uh, is there any financial, what are you not just putting out for the?
We're gonna, uh, as of right now, this is just a fact finding, it's not costing us anything for the fact finding. They'll submit a proposal, um, to both authorities of what it would cost them to run the operations there and that, until we see that number, we don't even know if it's legitimately.
Where do you guys run?
Uh, their, their big hub here is Johnstown. They're in Johnstown and Evansburg are the two closest systems that they run to us.
Where's the parent company?
Uh, nationwide, so I don't know where their headquarters.
There was a guy at Ohio here too, with some, uh, that's true.
Right, they have over three hundred municipalities coast to coast that they, that they handle the.
They're all, you can go around.
Where, where are they headquartered?
Um, in Texas.
Texas?
Texas.
Okay, so like I said, do we hear any more on that? Okay, the Calabonia Pipe Bridge? Just like Joe questioned about it and we're waiting till the October when Keller come in and inspect it.
Or try to get.
Or try to get it, for our limbs, um, I got pictures, they got my pictures of the beams underneath and of course, with Keller Engineering, they have a special inspection, that means we don't have to wait till October to see if we can up the tonnage and make it to the lanes.
Now, all we've prepared is the, is the two critical beams that were identified that caused it to go to one lane. Um, the county gave us eighty thousand dollars to do additional repairs which are in the works, but with the timing of that money coming in, it'll probably won't be until next summer by the time we get to those repairs. But it should go back to two lanes after the repairs we've done.
I get it.
And sixteen tons, which is where it was before they cut it down to eleven. So it should go back to where we were a year ago.
Uh, can I ask a question here? Uh, I have some jobs over there, when, when will I be able to hit a cement truck across that bridge?
October. How mu- how much weight are we talking, I said, it was only at sixteen ton before that limit, so.
When did it go to sixteen, Gary, cause it was, there was a combination load on that bridge.
It, it might be that there's a combination as well, but wherever it was before they dropped it to one lane, it'll go back to that with these repairs, is what we're hearing. Until it's, until it's inspected, we don't know that.
Even in October, can we get it across there?
Well, once.
With the approval.
Once they okay and.
Unless we get it earlier as much.
Yeah, Keller's inspected it twice in a year, each time they've inspected it, they've reduced its rate, because we got fired and then they were with a different company, so this company comes in and they're finding the, the bad, you know what I mean? Changed engineers, all of a sudden the problems change, so.
Yeah, cause there used to be a, a combination load compared to.
Right, you're right.
You know.
And that's probably just listed on there as well. But as far as the postings, he said sixteen tons where it was, that's the most he'll probably put it back to until we do the additional, there's a couple more beams they wanna see the same process done to.
Well, you only put four beams on it right now to repair to the kind of being. Were them near the center of the bridge?
One is the center and one at the, uh, farthest.
Fifty-five.
Five side, yeah. But, you know, the two that were identified, it had to be fixed immediately, that's what we started off, the county only gave us money after the fact, so we were planning on fixing the worst first.
This guy needs to get back to work at that bridge open so he can get a concrete cross there.
Then as soon as we know something, and we have asked for that inspection to be bumped up so that we can, cause I mean, I know you have work there, but the same, the people that live over there, same thing, firewood, fuel, oil, propane.
Can't get it, there's no.
We heard it all winter last winter and I mean, people were accommodating, they got the stuff into the most smaller trucks and.
Yeah.
I know, cement trucks not.
Here, are there both sides of that bridge, on that load, did you ever ask them that? Cause that's a two span.
I know, you would think it wouldn't be, cause both repairs were on first stage.
Yeah, I'm saying that because, uh, I did a job up north where I grew up, my temporary and and, uh, we put our overlay bridge over half of a a structure, cause the other half was good, so there might be something like that.
Yeah, I'll ask them about it if it's, to see where we can get to, but, uh, I don't know, because those footings are, I think it all sits on the same footing, so I don't know.
Well, the overlays don't, the overlays go over your center of here and then they, they sit back about four feet or five foot behind the abutment on the.
Okay.
On the.
I, we can have.
Self setting.
We can tell you Keller's not very accommodating.
It's all, it's all.
Compared to the other one before.
Markowski was the company, the county chooses that company. So they changed companies and it's been a nightmare since.
Well, I think Keller did it before.
They, yeah, Markowski's been doing it all the years I've been here, until you.
I think Keller did it before then.
Okay, let's move on to the D C N R and the Calabonia Pipe Road, Billy's what we're talking about now. The ordinance was advertised, okay.
So we've had it up reviewing for thirty days.
Yes.
Is there any comment on it, I know you have a comment on it.
If you wanna.
Well, you township never took care of it ever since I come back.
We took care of.
We took care of.
I seen, I seen coronary borders out there, was stuck in that road back in the fifties.
Right.
When I come back.
Well, I.
That means, and that's on the Elk County side, I know where the borders is. Nobody ever fixed it.
We went out there at least once a year and, and did repairs of some kind that were, you know, breaking stone and repairing. It does disappear, the problem is, is we, we don't have anybody, it's all state force then on both sides. We don't have any residents out there and we don't wanna commit funds to it that we only receive six thousand dollars a year off the piece we give back. So they all have to put more than six thousand dollars a year in there.
You're gonna put a lot of money.
Right, and so, if you, and they could have filed legally to take it, they actually approached us about taking that section back. They opened the quarry up there at the county line, um, they're building the base up in the road.
Yeah.
Over the next three to five years, it'll look just like the rest of the pipe, it'll have D S A grab on it, it's gonna be a beautiful road. You'll still be allowed to travel it, it won't, it won't be gated, it's, uh, their, their main goal, of course, is to take their timber out of there. But secondary, they're, they're being pushed to promote their roads for tourism, so. You'll be able to travel it. That was in the discussion when we, when we made the decision. It will not ever be gated. It's there because it's a connector to Parker Dam and Changers Inn and Medics Run.
Yeah.
They're promoting the tourism.
They fixed all roads up, all.
Right.
Tyler, here's Hill.
Right, so it, it'll look like the rest. You'll appreciate it in a couple of years, trust me. And there is that small fortune compared to what we could ever throw at that.
It's in rough shape. Ever hooks going up.
It's always been. It's always been.
It's entrenched, you know, it's. It's ruining your new grader taking it up there, probably.
Like I said, the time put in out there every year just to keep it passable for what we give in liquid fuel money, it's like.
It needs to go back to Corroy.
It's going back to DCNR, just like I said, wallis mines, knobs, low run. You look at all those roads.
Yeah, I come.
I mean, I do too.
I'm on. I wonder why I don't see anybody in the township anyplace. I travel these roads during the day. I have never come across a township truck anyplace.
You didn't go down Burke?
I come across them here, all I gotta do is look out there from the road, and that's the type of where.
You been down Spring Run or up Burke Road this week?
I go.
Well.
I haven't been to Spring Run this week.
Alright.
You mean you plowed it, find it, from your.
What's the ordinance number?
Okay, we're moving on. Ordnance update.
Twenty twenty-one dash one.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash one.
I second it. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried to prove it.
I need a motion to decide the agreement with DCNR to turn over two point four miles.
I'll make a motion to sign the agreement with DCNR to turn over two point four five miles of Township Road, eight seventy-nine.
All who's in favor?
Yes.
Aye, motion carried. Okay, uh, next is the old grader and municipal bid.
No, I don't think anyone's.
Ordinance update.
Oh, I'm. Okay.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Oh, there was no new complaints issued this, uh, month so far. Um, we had a hearing here at the township for an ongoing, two ongoing complaints that were issued. And, uh, I also followed up with the request from the magistrate for a property for photos on another property, so that's all I have.
And that, that last one, follow-up magistrate, everything satisfied there then?
Uh, that, it's his call right now.
He hasn't responded back yet, okay.
Yes, yes.
No new junkyard license?
Pardon?
No new junkyard license amendment?
No.
No. That ought to be looked into. That's.
I have one second. I have a lot there.
Okay, now we can move on to the greater municipal bid. You might, you're the one.
We put, I put the grader on this bid, um, set a reserve. If the reserve did not get matched, so it's up to you guys what you would like to do.
What do you have it on?
You mean?
Municipal bid?
Oh, municipal bid. It says municipality, you're.
Yeah.
And that is a bid. We got, well, we got what, one bid? Eighty? One bidder?
No.
Or are we multiple bids?
There's multiple bidders, but I only want the six thousand.
We only want the six thousand. We set a reserve for it. But we, since, since the bidding closed, we've received two calls.
Yes.
One from a supervisor in Boggs Township down in Center County that wants to come look at it.
Somebody from Maine.
And maybe somebody from the state of Maine that's called. Has already figured out the shipping on it.
I know that I could, I'm not mistaken, Lumber Township might be looking for a grader.
Well, if you know somebody there, tell them to give a call or come down and look at it.
That's okay, huh?
We're not gonna make a decision on it till next month because the guy from Boggs Township wants to come look at it. Yeah, but, uh, the other bidder from the state of Maine contacting us. Um, so, yeah, anybody that wants to, as far as municipality, municipality, we can do that.
Right, right.
What's the highest bid you see?
Six thousand?
Six thousand.
Six thousand.
Half what you'd want.
Half of what we would like to get, yeah.
Gibson looked at it too when we first, before.
Right.
Yeah, and I mean, they never come back, so.
Yeah, well, Gibson is in, you might as well put a bag of marbles behind it, because that's what they're in right now.
They, I know they were one of the first, before we even went to bid, uh, they were told, they come up and look.
Yeah.
Okay, hopefully we can get.
We're gonna work with these couple people that are aspiring. You know somebody that's looking, tell them to go.
Somebody just asking about one.
Yep.
From down over.
Alright.
Okay, let's move on. ATV ordinance amended?
Okay, it's the same thing. It was out for, uh, thirty days, and advertised. So it's just to open all the roads to ATVs and we'll pick them and choose them and open them. A new one and amending the ordinance every month. Any comments on opening the roads?
That's all your roads?
We're just gonna open them all, because we've already added Washington, and then we had a request to add Old Burndale. Instead of amending the ordinance.
Oh, I don't do that.
You know what I mean?
Still, like I said, you're gonna have to go by, have it licensed. I mean, you get stopped by a state police guy.
I don't even own one, so.
Right. I'm just saying this. But this way here, just like we brought it up, okay, we opened Old Burndale and something there. Then two months later, instead of Adnis, you know, running your paper, Arty, Coben, they're all done, so.
Right.
They're all.
Yeah, you got amendments on the consumer bills are included. Right. No, I don't know. You could do, can you do that? I mean, I, I think you have to.
They got a license too here, right?
Right, I know, but then you have to keep snow on it, I think, don't you?
No, you don't.
That'd be okay. I'm kidding. Alright, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Ninety-nine dash two.
Amendment to the ordinance ninety-nine dash two.
You have a second?
I second it.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm signing that later. Okay, we're going in a new business. Anti-skip bid advertised. We need a motion to put it out for advertising.
The, real quick, how many days is it until it takes effect? The ATV or the amend, the amendment, isn't it like thirty days or so?
Yeah, something like.
So all you guys on ATVs that are sitting here, don't think that you're good tomorrow. If somebody wants to be a stickler, it takes like a month for that to take legal effect, okay? Fair warning.
We, we are there. Do some donations for, uh, putting those ties and things in up to when you do open it up.
Yeah, I think we're gonna choose El County Riders. I think they're.
Is that what you're, is El County Riders is gonna do the donation?
Yeah, they're gonna.
Well, yeah, I mean, we, we've been meeting up with them, but.
Yeah, sure.
Word however, or just if you.
I'll put the word.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Good, okay, now new business is the anti-skip bid. We need a motion advertised for anti-skip. Uh, what are we gonna do? We did sixteen hundred ton last year, and before that was twenty-six hundred, but we did, uh, sixteen last year, and I think we do about a good.
Spring, you piled it out there again.
I'd say we do the same thing.
Yeah, we did the sixteen hundred, and we had the last four hundred delivered to the top of the hill in the spring here for carpet chips, so. I mean, and we build it more or less. We can always get more delivered to the top of the hill in the springtime if we happen to use all that in the wintertime.
So do I have a motion? I make a motion to do sixteen hundred ton. Put it out for bid. Second?
Second.
All who's in favor? Aye, motion carried.
We're gonna have more or less of that.
Yeah. More or less.
It's all in there. We're just to pay, yeah.
The motion was.
Right. More or less.
More or less.
More or less.
Hopefully it's less.
Yeah.
Okay, we're moving to the salt bin building. We did receive, like I said, the concrete part, that's all finished up. You guys, I think you did do a good job on it. So our second step in this is, uh, for bidding, the construction of it, the wood part and the metal and all that. Okay, we got three bids. Uh, Howard Spike McLean from Ridgeway. It's all listed here. I'm just gonna, his total bid was seventeen thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. And, yeah, another bid is from Miller's Construction. It's Henry Miller, Reynoldsville, PA. His bid was fifteen thousand, five hundred. Then we have another, our third bid was from Yoder Construction. I'm just trying to see where they're from here. Four twenty-seven, that's, that phone number is what, Ponce?
Yeah.
Yeah, Yoder Construction, it's on. Uh, his total bid was ten thousand, five hundred.
Did you ever look into the, the salt, the cans? It looked like a covered wagon wreck. The state.
Yeah, okay.
When they come in any summer.
All right, that was all, um.
They're pretty pricey. We looked into this a couple of years ago. One of, you know, one of this, you need steel structure and then you put that canvas over it.
Right.
Yeah, they're, they're up there, I mean.
All I know is they're not cheap, and I didn't go anywhere to look it up.
Yeah.
Those are all insured, those companies?
Yes.
Yeah.
They're all.
And they're.
Not that much detail on two of these.
They were all given the same information. Both were high.
The chair specs?
Yeah. Free plain, two by six walls.
What was the price? Ten twenty-five, yeah.
Yeah, they range from highest to seventeen, seven sixty to ten five.
No wall. Yeah, they were all given the same.
Yeah, specs.
What is the size of that? Do you know how to tell?
Twenty-six by thirty.
Oh.
Twenty-six by thirty.
What's your bid, Dana?
I don't want the wall.
I'll make a motion for Yoder in the ten thousand, five hundred.
You have a second? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried to accept Yoder Construction bid for ten thousand, five hundred dollars for this, for the salt bin building. Okay, assessment permit. Okay, we have one assessment permit from George Heigl, Spring Run, twenty-two sixty-nine Spring Run Road, Weedville. Uh, contractor Eric Stilinger, uh, putting a front porch on. Uh, type of construction porch. It's a camp, thirty-two by thirty-two.
That's a pork.
Yeah. That's a big one. Present, oh wait, I'm sorry. It's thirty-two by thirty-two. Size of the dish and is thirty-two by fourteen. So actually, it's a whole length of the building, but it's only fourteen feet on his schedule.
That sounds a little.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's.
I can dance.
Sounds like a building.
Square dance.
No, why is there nothing? I'll make, is that the only one we have? I'll make a motion to approve the permit for George Heigl.
I second it. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve George Heigl's assessment permit. Okay, sewage board applications. Actually, we have three, which is two openings. Okay, personnel under read Joey Birdie Junior. Thirteen oh one Cleveland Street, Weedville, self-employed, Street Street. Which, uh, that was brought up, so. Now I need a motion for Joey Bird. We have a motion for Joey Bird. Okay, I'm gonna move on to the next applicant. Lorraine Crocco, sixty-four forty-six Gardner Hill Road, Weedville. Employee office aging Ridgway, which she runs the Seamer Center. Like the water department board helped her properly, needs a lot of treatment, so. And we do, what are we, we have a three and a four.
Three and a four.
Okay. We have a motion for Lorraine Crocco. We have a three and a four year. I make a motion, what? I don't know. Three, four year. Four year? She didn't put which one, right? I'll second a motion to put Lorraine Crocco for a four-year term. I'm gonna abstain from that one because I think she's crazy. All who's in favor? Aye. Motion carried to put Lorraine on for the four-year term. The other application is from Rita Bonfordy, six ninety-one Elm Street, Weedville. Uh, she works for the Dallas Home Care, St. Mary's. To her board recently relocated back to Valley, close to family. Okay, you have a motion to put Rita Bonfordy on for the three-year term. I'll make that motion. Do you have a second? I'll second it. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried on for the three-year term. Okay, covers that. We go in, we have, what, subdivision?
Yeah.
Two subdivision.
So two?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, McGol Brothers subdivision and the John Green subdivision.
Johnny Green.
Okay, this is Johnny Green subdivision, okay, two thousand two south of New Township City, somebody. This is actually out there by Robin Road Extension on Outback Road. It's private road bordering Jay Township.
I read them over the other day. Looks like they're just providing them out. They're not granting to anybody. They're just self-ivoting. I don't know who's gonna buy it back, but they're just, it's not transferring it.
No.
It's just a sub.
Cause they did, uh, is it last month's one before we bring in the one?
Yeah.
That was just under his name, right? So then he sub to the.
So he's self-ivoting, and now then he turns around and presses out a lawsuit, yes.
Oh, the A.
Uh, it opens.
Yeah, that was my. Last one, the A before. Birdie shot.
And they're, they're listed as.
I'll make it count. I don't know.
They're listed as, you know, no buildings going on, et cetera, so they haven't, so I told them to pass that information to us because that's one that, I have a little bit, we don't get up that way that often, so you gotta keep an eye on it. Bernie, Bernie Day.
Dancing.
Especially your dad before.
Okay, the other one is for the McGol Brothers subdivision.
That's right up there. They're just providing the leftover property, three lots.
Yeah, it's up there off, uh, McGol.
It's like a, yeah, and it's behind Zimmerman and Wyng.
Wyng.
That new piece, Mr. Clear.
There is.
And there's a right away in tall that's listed on there too. Again, they're just providing out three more parcels.
Good there?
Yeah.
Okay, motion for, anything else?
No.
Motion for adjournment?
Well, we gotta make a motion to. I'll make a motion to approve the green, the green subdivision.
I'll second it. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried through. I'll make a motion to approve McGol. Sub.
We're gonna.
And I'll second, yeah, we just did a session, so.
Do you not pick that one?
I did agree, I, I, I motioned green, he seconded.
I motioned McGol.
Well, and I second it.
All who's in favor, aye.